Good morning and welcome to the April 3, 2019 Board of County Commissioners Meeting. I'm Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer with Sedgwick County. You've heard us talking for awhile now about land use issues regarding wind and solar energy operations. If you missed our public forum last week, there is still a chance for you to leave your comments online at sedgewickcounty.org. This morning, I'd like to introduce Chris Stewart from our Health Department to talk about STI Awareness Month.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you Commissioners for allowing me to briefly update you on STI Awareness Month. During the month of April each year, the American Sexual Health Association and the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, CDC, recognize STI Awareness Month. Sexually transmitted infections include syphilis, gonorrhea, and chlamydia. Similar to national trends, over the last four years, Sedgwick County has experienced an increase in STIs. In 2018, 38 residents were diagnosed with syphilis, more than 1,500 were diagnosed with gonorrhea, and more than 3,000 were diagnosed with chlamydia. Disease intervention specialists at the Sedgwick County Health Department are especially trained to investigate and provide counseling and testing for persons having or at risk for syphilis, gonorrhea, and HIV. They work to control the spread of disease. STIs are too common. People with STIs may not have symptoms, and so may not be diagnosed and may spread the organisms that cause disease. Left undetected and untreated, STIs can cause serious health consequences. CDC reports half of all new STI cases in the US are in people between the ages of 15 and 24, but only 12% of young people say they have been tested in the last year. This STI Awareness Month, the American Sexual Health Association, CDC, and Sedgwick County are drawing attention to the importance of STI testing. As part of this effort, we are promoting the campaigns of "Yes Means Test" and "GYT, Get Yourself Tested." STI testing is a basic part of staying healthy. The Sedgwick County Health Department offers confidential screening and testing for STIs at our main clinic located at 2716 West Central. Residents can call 316-660-7300 for more information on how to make an appointment and our fee structures. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, and we have a large agenda this morning. Commissioners, you'll have meeting minutes to consider, a proclamation declaring Child Abuse Awareness Month, a proclamation declaring National Public Health Week, appointments to the Animal Care Advisory Board, and the Solid Waste Management Committee, two items regarding property tax relief, a zoning case in District 3, a resolution for improvements to the county courthouse complex, a resolution to repair or build bridges, and a report of the Board of Bids and Contracts. And then Commissioners, you'll go into the governing body of Fire District One meeting. And with that Chairman, I'll hand the meeting to you.
Thank you Kate, I appreciate it. We do have a busy agenda today, but I do want to welcome all the folks that are joining us. We have a full house here in our chambers this morning. Also want to welcome those that are observing this on PPDS and those that are watching online. At this time, I'd like to call a meeting to order for Wednesday, April 3, 2019. Madam Clerk, next item.
Invitation to be led by Reverend Pamela Murdis Hughes Mason, St. Paul African Methodist Episcopal. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Let us pray. Oh God, this morning, we thank you that you allowed us to wake up. We thank you God, as we gather together this day, we ask now dear God, for those who serve, to give them the spirit of service. Embracing the impact on our community, understanding the needs and the desires, but also serving with integrity. We ask you God, to bring them close together as they work through the holistic approach to wholeness in our community. So now dear God, we ask also that you would cover their intellectual decisions, cover their families, and cover their service. Committed to serve in ways we have never seen. So we thank you for the voices of our community. This we declare in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend, thank you very much for being here and for the invitation. We appreciate it. Next item please.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Chairman Dennis.
Present.
Next item please.
Public Agenda.
Thank you. I have one individual signed up to speak on Public Agenda this morning. Latasha Saint-Arnault. I hope I said your last name correctly.
Pretty close, I'm impressed. Saint-Arnault, it's French, Canadian, difficult. So, good morning. Thank you Chairman and County Commissioners for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. I really appreciate it. My name is Latasha Saint-Arnault, and I'm the President of Interfaith Ministries. And just want to kind of make a few announcements about exciting things that we have coming up that we thought we'd share with you. As many of you may know, Interfaith Ministries serves those living in extreme poverty, including the homeless. IFM was founded nearly 135 years ago with this mission in mind, and since then, we have served thousands of individuals and families in this very community. Interfaith Ministries operates three homeless shelters and 105 low-income apartments, 43 of which are designated specifically for the chronically homeless. We also have Kansas' largest holiday distribution program. Some of you might have heard of it, Operation Holiday. IFM also participates in a fill-the-gap lunch program where we serve kids lunches in our apartment complexes and those in the surrounding community. Finally, we have a street outreach team that actually meets clients where they're at, where we find them in encampments and other very stressful situations where we build trust and rapport with those struggling. Our model really starts out with our street outreach team, and then basically what we do is we try to move them into emergency shelters, then our year-round shelter, and then eventually our apartments, our affordable housing program. We work really well with other community partners. We collaborate quite often. Obviously, that's in the best interest of the client. If we can't get them into our permanent housing, we try to work with them, with others in the community, with voucher programs and so on. Clients receive food, shelter, life classes, including budgeting, job placements, cooking, stress management, smoking sensation, just to name a few. And then as I mentioned before, we have wraparound case management for anyone that comes to our doors. Every year, we're serving about 1,400 unduplicated men, women, and children that are homeless through our shelters. We also serve an additional 200 individuals and families through our permanent housing program. And then Operation Holiday, just this year alone, served 14,000 individuals and families, providing basic necessities through the winter months, and of course, toys for the kids. With our two emergency winter shelters, we serve approximately 140 men and women each night. And at those facilities, we are providing food, clothing, basic medical care, and case management as well. Overall, each year, IFM is serving nearly 16,000 Wichitaans, most vulnerable residents, and we find this work to be incredibly critical for the community at large, and we know you do too. Because this work is so important, we wanted to share a new event with you. This is the first year Interfaith Ministries will be hosting a Homeless for a Day Challenge. As you know, there is often a lack of empathy for the homeless, and the purpose of this event is to combat that and dispel many of the common misconceptions about this population while raising compassion and of course, much-needed funds for the homeless in our city. The event will be April, Saturday, April 27, and we'll be hosting it on our Interfaith Ministries campus. As many of you might know, we have about a two-block campus from Murdoch and Market, all the way from Market to Ninth Street. So we'll be giving tours of campus, and we'll also be having participants stay in one of our emergency shelters. I think it's important to note that this event is not displacing any clients, that this facility is already closed for the season. On any given night, there are nearly 600 homeless Wichitaans, and that does not count those that are staying with family or friends, what we consider couch surfing, and it also does not count those living in their cars. Now, while some suffer from mental illness or chronic poverty issues, many are just like you and me. This event, we want to really stress, is not about pretending to be homeless, it's about raising awareness for the serious challenges of our homeless population here in Wichita, and it turns participants into advocates. There are multiple ways to get involved, of course, as you can imagine, either participating. We also have a virtual option, but we hope that you guys will be advocates too and share this with your colleagues, family, friends, and the community. And again, I really appreciate your time. I've passed out some materials for you guys to review, so we hope you share those with those in your offices and my business cards as well. So we welcome you guys to come to campus anytime that's convenient, either for the event or another time. We'd love to give you a tour and just talk a little bit more about our services here in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Saint-Arnault. I appreciate very much your being here today. The mission that you have dovetails perfectly with the mission here in Sedgwick County and much of the things that we do. So we do appreciate you partnering with us and helping those that need help at the greatest time.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. I do have one question, or one comment. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you so much for giving us this presentation. I mean, these numbers, I just kind of jotted them down. 600 people homeless on any given night. So in District 4, which is the district that I represent, I drive by every single day and I see the same homeless people, and it just, it makes me sad. And if we don't do something as a community to help these folks, which I know that there's so much going on, but it's like, what can we do as individuals? So that's what, I mean, I want to take this challenge, it's actually on my birthday. What a way to start my 37th year, right?
What a way, yeah.
What a way. So, okay, well, thank you so much for being here and doing the work that you do.
Yeah, thank you again. Really appreciate your guys' support and interest in the issues.
Thank you very much. Again, thank you for being here. I don't have anyone else signed up to speak on the public agenda, but if anyone else is in the audience would like to speak, we'll give you an opportunity at this time. Seeing no one, Madam Clerk, next item.
Consideration of Minutes. Item A, Regular Meeting Minutes of March 6, 2019.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I move that we approve the minutes for March 6 and March 13. Every Commissioner has had an opportunity to review these. Do I have a second? Do we have a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Next item please.
Proclamations. Item C, Proclamation Declaring Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, I have a proclamation that I'd like to read. Whereas, children are a key to the state's future success, prosperity, and quality of life. And while children are our most valuable resource, they are also our most vulnerable. And whereas children have a right to be safe and to be provided an opportunity to thrive, learn, and grow. And whereas, child abuse and neglect can be prevented by supporting and strengthening Kansas' families, thus preventing the far-reaching effects of maltreatment, providing the opportunity for children to develop healthy, trusting family bonds, and therefore, building the foundations of communities. And whereas, we must come together as partners so that the voices of our children are heard by all, and we are as a community extending a helping hand to children and families in need. And whereas, by providing safe, stable, and nurturing relationships for our children, free of violence, abuse, and neglect, we can ensure that Kansas' children will grow to their full potential as the next generation of leaders, helping to secure the future of this state and nation. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Chairman David T. Dennis, and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby recognize April 19 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Sedgwick County, and I call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens. Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
And accepting this is Pamela Noble, Assistant Director of Child Prevention Abuse for Kansas. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you very much Commissioners for signing the proclamation this morning. We in Kansas Children's Service League work very hard throughout the community and this state to prevent child abuse before it ever happens. Diana Shun is with us this morning. She is the Executive Director for the Child Advocacy Center, and she is one of our many partners. And we also have many, we have some different case management programs that work with Interfaith Ministries and the homeless population as well. In 1976, the National Committee for Child Abuse Prevention, what's now Prevent Child Abuse America, asked that the states have individual chapters. Kansas was the first state to step up to the challenge. Sue Ann Fried founded the chapter. She's still, she's in her 80s, she still is very active in child abuse prevention and bullying prevention, and with a prison ministry as well. Our annual campaign has grown and changed quite a bit since 1976. In your packet, you have pinwheel pins. I also have a VESA pinwheels for you to set in one of the county offices wherever you would choose. The pinwheel is the symbol of child abuse prevention. It symbolizes that children should have happy and healthy lives, they should have strong family bonds, and that we should all be working towards that. Prevention strategies we know are most effective when we collaborate with the public and the private agencies. As I said, we work quite a bit with the Child Advocacy Center, we work with Interfaith Ministries, we work with the different homeless and domestic violence shelters, and a variety of different partners across the city and the state. We know that programs and strategies that start early, that 0 to 3 timeframe in a child's life, prenatal if we can get them, is really important. Home visiting, parent education, mental health services, self-help support groups, substance abuse treatments, respite care, and quality affordable childcare, all make a huge difference in the lives of children and families. And in Kansas especially, strong families make strong businesses. So we want to invest in our families, we want to look at those parents who have grown up with a large number of adverse childhood experiences that affect their ability to go to work now, and we want to help them turn that around so those children are growing up in much more positive situations. For every dollar that we spend on the prevention side, we save seven on the backside, which equates to productivity costs about, cost employers about $147,000 over each lifetime. And the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention show that implementing policies and strategies for child abuse prevention save taxpayers about $80 billion annually. Friday, April 5, this coming Friday, is Wear Blue Day for Child Abuse Prevention, so I encourage you all to wear blue. I encourage you to take pictures and you can tag us on social media using the hashtag #GreatChildhoods, the hashtag #WearBlue, and you can @KCSL, and then we can share that with all of our partners. If you want additional pinwheels to plant in your gardens, in your offices, whatnot, there is information in your packets on how to contact us, and we can get those for you. Questions?
Very good. Well, we sincerely appreciate what you do. We know how important this is. I taught school for a number of years, and I think it's vital that we take care of our children. I know we do a lot of work with kids that don't have all of the advantages, and that's why we have to have things like our Child Advocacy Center.
Exactly.
By that we have organizations like the Messing and Exploited Child Department that we've got. We sincerely appreciate what you do, and we appreciate you getting the word out, and we hope that folks heed the message that you're providing for us today.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't have any other comments, but I appreciate it. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item D, Proclamation Declaring National Public Health Week and Recognizing the Dr. Doran Frederickson Award Recipient.
Thank you. Commissioners, I have a proclamation that I'd like to read. Whereas, during the first full week of April each year, the American Public Health Association brings together communities across the US to observe National Public Health Week. And whereas, everyone deserves to live a long and healthy life in a safe environment, and to make this a reality, we need to address the causes of poor health and disease risk among individuals within our communities. We need to start new conversations with our neighbors and become advocates for positive change. And whereas, this year's theme, Creating the Healthiest Nation for Science, for Action, for Health, celebrates the power of prevention, advocating for healthy and fair policies, sharing strategies through successful partnerships, and championing the role of a strong public health system. And whereas, National Public Health Week 2019 will become part of a growing movement to create the healthiest nation in one generation. During the week, we will celebrate the power of prevention, advocate for healthy and fair policies, share strategies for successful partnerships, and champion the role of strong public health system. And whereas, his legacy and that of many other public health champions, such as Steve Cohen, are commemorated through the Doran Frederickson Lifetime Commitment to Public Health Award. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Chairman David T. Dennis, and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby recognizing April 1 to the 7, 2019, as National Public Health Week. Christine Stewart, Sedgwick County Division of Health Protection Director, will come forward to accept this proclamation and to present this year's award. Move to approve the proclamation?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner. Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Very good. Welcome this morning.
Thank you. Thank you Commissioners for reading our proclamation and allowing us to be here today. I'm Chris Stewart, Health Protection Director at the Sedgwick County Health Department. Also joining me today are a few members of the Coalition of Coalitions, building the case for public health in Sedgwick County. Want to stand up? Thank you.
Thank you all for being here.
As stated, National Public Health Week is this week, April 1 through the 7, and is part of a growing movement to create the healthiest nation in one generation. This week, with the support of the American Public Health Association, we will celebrate the power of prevention, advocate for healthy and fair policies, share strategies for successful partnerships, and champion the role of a strong public health system. Each day of the spearheaded American Public Health Association, National Public Health Week will focus on a public health topic, including healthy communities, violence prevention, rural health, technology in public health, climate change, and global health. Most importantly, today, the Sedgwick County Health Department bestows its annual Doran Frederickson Lifetime Commitment to Public Health Award. Dr. Doran Frederickson was the Kansas Health Foundation Distinguished Professor of Preventive Medicine at the KU School of Medicine in Wichita. He also served as the Health Officer for the Sedgwick County Health Department from 2002 to 2008. He passed away in August of 2008. His parents and many others described Dr. Frederickson as a humanitarian who focused his career on helping the uninsured and medically underserved. This year, we are excited to bestow the Doran Frederickson Award to Mr. Steve Cohen, President and CEO of the Kansas Health Foundation. Would you like to stand up here? Steve Cohen has served as President and CEO of the Kansas Health Foundation since August 2008. Since joining the foundation in 1987, Mr. Cohen has held a number of different positions, including Director of Public Affairs, Senior Program Officer, and Vice President for Administration. Before coming to the foundation, Mr. Cohen served as a Legislative Assistant to Senator Bob Dole in Washington DC, and as State Director of his four Kansas offices. In addition to his professional experiences, Mr. Cohen served as Chair of the Governor's Council on Fitness, and is a member of the Leadership Council of the Greater Wichita Partnership. Mr. Cohen's idea to develop a physically active, healthy lifestyle course for high school students earned him a national award from the American Alliance for Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance. He also received the 21st Century Community Champion Award, given by the American Association of Family and Consumer Science, to individuals who have made a significant contribution toward strengthening families. Mr. Cohen completed his undergraduate work at Emporia State University, and later earned a law degree from Washburn University in Topeka. So I believe Chairman Dennis has some remarks before the award is presented.
Certainly do. First of all, I want to welcome all of the members that are here to honor Mr. Cohen this morning. I especially want to recognize Becky Tuttle, who is also City Councilwoman for Wichita. Thank you very much for being here this morning. On behalf of Sedgwick County Commission, we're honored to have here this morning Steve Cohen, the Distinguished and Retiring President and CEO of the Kansas Health Foundation. Steve served as President and CEO of the Kansas Health Foundation since August 2008. He's held several different positions there since 1987, including Director of Public Affairs, Senior Program Officer, and Vice President for Administration. Under Steve's leadership, the Kansas Health Foundation created the Kansas Leadership Center, established 20-year, $60 million investment in the state community foundations called Giving Resources to Our World, developed innovative in-school physical education programs, and recently launched the Can't Wait to Read Early Childhood Literacy Campaign. Steve has been a champion and an innovative thinker on matters that are essential to Sedgwick County government. During his tenure, the Kansas Health Foundation has been leading the community partner on public health in ways that have served our residents and moved our community collectively forward. Thank you, Steve. We appreciate all your service to our community.
Well, thank you very much Chairman Dennis and Commissioners, and the other people involved in this award, the Coalition of Coalitions, I know you played a big role in this. It is a tremendous honor to receive this. I knew Doran Frederickson, obviously personally. I've been at the foundation 31 years, which I can't believe. It's gone by very quickly. He was a great man, a mentor to many of us. Very sad that he passed away so early because he gave so much to this community. Really, this award belongs to many people. I almost feel guilty receiving it because so many people contributed to the foundation's work. Obviously, my wife Monica has supported me all these 31 years in many ways, so I really appreciate her support. And then also, all the many staff people that we have at the foundation. We have some of them here today, and I'd like those that are here with me today to please stand. We had some others that were here earlier, and they obviously make our work possible at the foundation. We've had many over the years that have come and gone as well, that have contributed all this great work when you were reading those grants. It's not just me that pulls those off, I can definitely tell you that. All these people make that work happen. Also, I just wanted to briefly tell you that, you know, this Public Health Award means a lot to us because early in the foundation's history, our board made the decision that we were going to focus most of our resources towards public health, towards prevention. Because our society spends so much money on healthcare, and actually, which is very different than many other countries. We spend so much of our money in this country focusing on sickness rather than keeping our population healthy. And other countries actually have longer lifespans than the United States because they target more of their money on keeping their population healthy. I mean, many people find that unbelievable. But if you look at lifespans in other countries, many other countries have longer lifespans than Americans do. We're really way down on the list because they spend more of their resources on keeping people healthy, and that's what public health is all about, is trying to keep people healthy before they get sick. And so our board made the decision that we are going to target our resources on public health and prevention, population-based approaches to healthcare. And you all play a very important role in doing that by supporting the Public Health Department in Sedgwick County. And fortunately, we have a good Public Health Department in this county. Not that it couldn't be better, but we do have a strong Public Health Department, and that's really important in a community the size of Wichita. So all you can do to strengthen that Public Health Department is really important, and to strengthen it into the future. So I want, once again, thank you very much for this very prestigious award. I appreciate it very much, on behalf of myself and also the entire Kansas Health Foundation staff. Thank you so much.
Thank you Chairman. Steve, just my sincere congratulations on a well-deserved award, and thank you for not only the public health stuff, but everything else you do in our community. I enjoy serving on various boards and efforts with you, and you have a real positive impact on our community, and I just wanted to share my appreciation, and somehow, your wife Monica is way too young to be retired, but that's the difference. I don't know how she did it. Maybe she can write a book. Yeah, I know. Anyway, thank you again.
Thank you. Well, Steve. Thank you. Steve, again, thank you very much for what you do for public health. One of the things that we don't really meet at as the Board of Public Health here in regular session, but we are, in everything that we do and every motion that we make and everything that comes before this board, we always have to keep in the back of our mind that public health is part of our job here in Sedgwick County as Board of County Commissioners. So you help us greatly in fulfilling our mission as the Board of Health for Sedgwick County, and thank you very much. I appreciate it. Madam Clerk, next item.
Appointments. Item E, Resolution Appointing Susan Erlinwine to the Sedgwick County Animal Care Advisory Board.
Commissioners Mike Papoun, interim County Counselor, with your permission Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I had asked that we combine Items E, F, G, and H together. If that's all right.
Thank you. Mr. Papoun, I move that we approve Item Echo Foxtrot Golf and Hotel.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And do we have, I know we have Susan Erlinwine here to be sworn in.
Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and read the different items and explain the different people being appointed. I'm sorry if I confuse things here with just combining the items. But anyway, the Items E, F, G, and H are all appointments to our Animal Control Advisory Board, which is of course, an important board of the county that provides policies and procedures for animal care in the community and valuable advice to the county commission. Item E is appointing Susan Erlinwine to the board. She's an appointment by Commissioner Meitzner. She's being reappointed to this board. Items F and G are Chairman Dennis's appointments. Item F is Neta Otis. She is a member of an animal care organization and a member of the board, and she's being reappointed. Item G is Shelley Seidel. She's volunteered for animal care organization. She's also the chairman's reappointment to this board. And Item H is another appointment by Commissioner Meitzner, appointing, reappointing Jerry Watts to the board, and she has been involved with Kansas State Animal Response Team, also a important member of the board. So all the resolutions are in proper legal form and ask that the board approve the resolutions.
Mr. Papoun, thank you for that clarification, and on behalf of Board of County Commissioners, we want to thank each of those individuals for volunteering to serve as advisors to this board. And Susan, I guess you're going to get sworn in. Mr. Clerk.
All right. I do solemn swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Animal Care Advisory Board to help me out.
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the reappointment to the board. The Animal Care Board has been working very hard the last couple of years with the staff of the Animal Control Department. We've looked at what they need, where they need more assistance in the regulations, what works, what doesn't. We've looked at other communities and their regulations, and worked with our legal department on upgrading those regulations to better give them tools that they can use to help the health and welfare of the animals in our community. So I appreciate this reappointment, and we'll continue to work hard to help on all the animal issues. Thank you.
Very good. Thanks Susan. And please let the board members know that we're not able to be here today, that we do appreciate their support also.
I'll pass that on.
Madam Clerk, next item.
Item I, Resolution Reappointing Susan Bose to the Sedgwick County Solid Waste Management Committee.
Mr. Papoun.
And Mr. Chairman, Mike Papoun, interim County Counselor, again, I will combine Items I and J if that's all right. Item I is a reappointment, and these are commission appointments, not individual commissioner appointments, to the Solid Waste Management Committee, which of course is important in originally developing the solid waste management plan and reviewing that on an annual basis for the county commission. These are two-year appointments. Item I is a reappointment of Susan Bose to the board, and she fills the Citizens Organization appointment on that board. And Item J is a reappointment of Clement Dickerson, who is a representative of the board from the unincorporated area of the county, also a two-year appointment. Resolutions are in proper legal form and ask that the board approve the resolutions.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Papoun. Any questions for Mr. Papoun? Seeing none, I move that we approve India and Juliette.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Okay, and neither one of those individuals are here, correct? Very good. Okay, next item, please.
New Business. Item K, Consider Request for Property Tax Relief Pursuant to KSA 79-1613 in the amount of $1,497.11.
Good morning. Good morning Chairman, Commissioners, Justin Waggoner, Assistant County Counselor. Pursuant to KSA 79-1613, if a homestead is destroyed or substantially destroyed as a result of a flood, fire, earthquake, tornado, storm, or other event declared a disaster by the governor, the owner of the homestead can apply for a tax abatement or credit. The particular application that's in front of you on this agenda item is for a residence that was located at 478 North Pamela, which is in Wichita and also in District 3. The fire occurred on that property in January of 2018, resulted in a total loss to the property. The owner of record is Ms. Jennifer George. She resided in the property and submitted an application for the property tax relief. By statute, there's three findings the Board of County Commissioners has to make, and I'll present the appropriate staff recommendations for each of those findings. First one is whether this was a homestead. County staff recommends a finding that this was a homestead. It's a single-family home that was occupied by Ms. George at the time of the fire. Second finding is whether it was destroyed or substantially destroyed. This property was, the appraiser's office determined it was a 100% loss, so the recommended finding would be that it was destroyed. Then lastly, there's a required finding as to the assessed valuation, which for the applicable tax year on this property, the recommendation would be the finding that it was $13,685 as the assessed valuation. As a result of all of that, the staff recommendation on this matter is to grant the requested property tax relief and authorize the chairman to sign the order that's in your agenda. Couple other things I usually point out on these agenda items is that even if a property does meet all the requirements for relief, the Board of County Commissioners is not required to grant that relief. In addition to that, while this is not a public hearing by statute, generally a recommendation that you allow the property owner, applicant, agent, or any other interested parties an opportunity to speak, and it's just a simple majority vote of the Commissioners. I'd be happy to stand for any questions, too.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Wagner? See no questions. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this subject? Seeing no one in the audience, I'll bring it back to the board. I move that we approve the tax relief pursuant to KSA 79-1613 in the amount of $1,497.11.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item L, Consider Request for Property Tax Relief Pursuant to KSA 79-1613 in the amount of $946.78.
Hello again Commissioners, Justin Waggoner, Assistant County Counselor. This particular application, same statute you just dealt with in the last agenda item, it's for a residence that was located at 319 South Vassar, which is District 1. Fire occurred on that property on September 24th of 2018, resulted in a near-total loss of the property. The owner of record of the property at that time was Arlene Squire. She lived in the property at that time and died as a result of the fire approximately 10 days later, from injuries suffered during the fire. The application for property tax relief was submitted by Lisa Squire. It's my understanding Lisa Squire is Arlene's daughter. She's one of four beneficiaries that Arlene had included on a transfer on death deed that had been recorded in the Register of Deeds office back in 2011. That's my understanding that the other three beneficiaries are siblings of Ms. Lisa Squire. Before delving into the three findings that the Board of County Commissioners is required to make on this, I did want to note that the overall recommendation from county staff on this item is to deny this application, and the basis for that recommendation is because the applicant is not, Ms. Lisa Squire was not the owner of the property at the time of the disaster, the fire in this case. The statute appears to contemplate that you need to be the actual owner of record at the time of the event. While noting county staff's overall recommendation, I will go over each of the three findings and also offer some additional thoughts on a potential alternative finding that the county Commissioners could make. First, whether this was a homestead or not, county staff recommends the BCC make a finding that this was a homestead. It was a single-family home that was occupied by Ms. Arlene Squire. The second finding is whether the homestead was destroyed or substantially destroyed. In this case, the appraiser's office made a determination it was 94% loss. The recommendation would be a finding that it was substantially destroyed. And the third finding was the assessed valuation. The applicable tax year for this property, the assessed valuation was $8,626. And while I've already presented the recommendation from the county staff this be a denial, if the will of the county commission would be to approve this item, such a finding could be reasonable under the following grounds. When Ms. Arlene Squire passed away, Lisa Squire and the three other beneficiaries became the owner of record and became responsible for the payment of taxes on this property. The 2017 tax amount was used to determine what applicable taxes would be eligible for credit on this. The first half of taxes, I'm sorry, let me back up, and the total amount for potential tax abatement would be $946. The taxes are current through the first half of 2018. As a result, it could be reasonable for you as the county Commissioners to conclude that Lisa Squire, as the successor and interest to Arlene Squire, could qualify for tax relief. Also, but for Ms. Arlene Squire, her passing, she would qualify for all three findings the Board of County Commissioners would make under the statute. If the Board of County Commissioners' will is to approve the applicant's request for relief, consistent with those grounds I just indicated, and also as an administrative matter, it could be appropriate to limit that relief to this particular parcel, to where it wouldn't apply to any other parcels that the four current owners could apply for. If you have more questions on that, I'd be happy to answer that.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
And that, with that, I don't have any other comments, but I'd be happy to answer questions.
Very good. Do we have any questions for Justin? Commissioner Cruz.
So I just want to clarify. So if Ms. Squire wouldn't have passed away, so she had, she had it in her will that if, when she passed away, all of her rights automatically transferred to her children, right?
I'm not, Commissioner Cruz, I'm not sure if she did or did not have a will, but she had a transfer on death deed. And as an operation of that transfer on death deed, once she passed away, the property did transfer to the four named beneficiaries.
Okay. So, and you said previously that had she, had she lived through this, she would have qualified to have this relief?
That's correct.
Okay.
And I think under the theory that Lisa Squire is a successor and interest, but for Ms. Arlene Squire's passing, perhaps the board can make a finding that there should be a qualification for relief in this matter.
Okay. So I would like to make a motion, or do I have to make a?
Let's wait till we see if anybody from the public, and I'd be glad to know.
I'm learning here.
Very good. Is anyone in the public wish to speak on this issue? Very good. I see no one. Commissioner Cruz.
Okay, I would like to make a motion that we approve this tax relief. Is that correct?
Tax relief.
Tax relief. That's what I would like to do.
And I'll second that.
Very good. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to reflect on a little bit of history here. This law came to be because back in April of 2012, the Oakland community sustained a tornado that destroyed much of that, I'd say a good portion of that community was destroyed, and this is the same tornado that wiped out part of Spurdero Systems. And as a consequence, the governor did declare a natural disaster, and we did our best as a community to rally around that community, to help them rebuild, and it was truly a hardship for them. And as much as I am very sympathetic to the passing of Arlene Squire, and I am, and I make condolences to that, to that situation, I'm very sorry that she succumbed to that fire, and I am very, again, I'm very sorry for that. The original intent of KSA 79-1613 was for hardship of a community. There was an amendment made a subsequent year that provided this to be done without a declaration of disaster on an individual basis, but that was not the original intent of this law. And I think that we continue to see these come before this board. I think we're the only community in the entire state of Kansas that is doing it this way, and I think we need to clean this up a little bit. My opinion is the original intent of that law was very good, and I still support that, but I think it's, this is kind of taking a turn in a different direction than it was intended, so here's my concern. This is, we can't make things right from Arlene Squire because she did pass, and that's, again, extremely unfortunate that that happened. But in terms of a hardship, the family is receiving her estates essentially, and I'm not sure where the hardship is, and this intent, the intent of this is not to do anything other than try to help people get back on their feet. And that's why we, why we do this. In fact, it's really, it was based on the idea of community because a community that, for example, Greensburg or even Eureka, that have a very devastating natural disaster like that, the community itself needs to have some help, and it's, it allows the, it allows the governing body the opportunity to abate some tax so to help that community get back on its feet. It's based on hardship. I think we've gone so far away from the intent of 79-1613, I would make a substitute motion that we would take the recommended action.
Thank you. We have a substitute motion. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Motion fails due to lack of second. And I'll explain why that I didn't second that. I am concerned that, as Commissioner Howell said, that we have a law in place that right now may be moving past where the intent was when it was first passed. And I think probably we need to have our folks put that on our legislative platform for next year to see if we can clean that up. But unfortunately, right now, what I see is that because of the fact that a person passed away and couldn't do exactly what's being done, they're going to lose that opportunity to do it. And so I understand fully what Commissioner Howell said, and he was in the House at the time that this was passed, so I think that he has a very good knowledge of exactly what the intent was behind it. But I think as Commissioners, we need to take a look at it very closely and make a decision based on what we think is right. In this case, I think what's right is that just because someone passed and couldn't sign the piece of paper to ask for this, and their next of kin is asking for this, that we ought to grant that. So I will turn it over to Commissioner Meitzner.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman. Justin, can you, when you started your presentation, this case or the one before, what was, what's the law today? Disasters include fire, flood?
Sure.
Can you repeat that?
Yeah, the way that it's worded now is that it has to be either an earthquake, flood, tornado, fire, or storm, or an event or occurrence which the governor declared a disaster.
So it's either those or?
That's correct.
The governor declares a disaster somewhere?
That's correct. And so a fire just by itself without a declaration of disaster could be enough to qualify as an event.
Okay. And I hear the dialogue, and if we want to take a position for our legislative agenda next year, that's, that's fine to clarify. I would agree that the word hardship is thrown around, and obviously, this was a hardship case, and so I'm supportive of what, and the rules today, and as what you just read there, that's what the rules are, the laws, so thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell.
Just a couple more things. Again, the law is permissive. It does not mandate that we have to take a position. It allows us the right to do so if we, if we so choose. I do think we ought to be consistent, and in that line, I think we ought to develop a local policy regardless of what happens with legislation. I don't, I would be, I think it's unlikely they would return this law back to what was passed in 2013. It's possible, but just to, I guess as a reminder, I was, I was representative of the Oakland community, which is why I wrote this bill. I mean, that's why this bill exists today, is because we, again, years ago, like when the Greensburg tornado happened, they the Greensburg tornado happened, they, the county came, came after that event and said, where's our, you know, please pay your tax bill. And it was very harsh and cold to a very difficult situation that the community was going through. And Oakland, much the same, was going through a very difficult time. So, we, we wanted to have a way that a government could show some, some sensitivity to, to community hardship. That's what was the intent of this bill. Again, it's written to be permissive, so there's, even though other communities do not do what we're doing today, they're in total compliance with, with the law by not providing an abatement, because it is permissive, not a mandate. And in a sense, when you, when you abate one person's taxes, you are shifting that tax burden to every other taxpayer. It's not like we're lowering, lowering our need for tax revenue. We still passed a budget, we're still, we're still, you know, attempting to get the same revenue we had before, but when they calculate, when they calculate the, the amount of taxes owed by each property owner, those, those numbers will shift. So, I don't know that, again, I'll stick with my, my original, my original position that we should, we should not approve this, because I think it's gone in the wrong direction. And again, this would absolutely be a hardship on, on Arlene Squire. If, if she was living, I would certainly want to help her get back on her feet, but to the, to the family that's receiving her estate, that's, it's not the same type of a hardship. I assume that they'll have places to live. I don't know the details there, but, again, so I would advocate that regardless of what happens today on this particular issue, we ought to consider developing a local policy that, that outlines exactly how we would handle these individual cases. We don't have a mandate by the law to do this. In fact, the, I think that entire thing that you read, Mr. Wagner, actually was fairly debatable, in my opinion. And I think that the, the prevailing opinion is that the, that the "or" there applies to the National Disasters Clause only, but I think there's another opinion that maybe all of those divide, all of those events should be a community-type event, not just an individual basis. So, I think there's some controversy in the way that's worded. That's my opinion, anyway. I'll stick with my original position, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak once again. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And again, I understand Commissioner Howell's position on this, but as a taxpayer myself, and all of us up here are taxpayers, if you're told that you're going to pay taxes on something that doesn't exist anymore, why, it's probably going to go against your grain just a little bit. So, I can, I can fully understand why that they would ask for this. I don't have a problem at all with asking our staff to take a look at our local procedures and come back with some recommendations for the Board of County Commissioners to decide if they want some local procedures, or if we want to hold it on a case-by-case basis as we're doing this event. I don't see anyone else that wishes to speak at this time. We do have a motion before the board to grant the relief on tax from this, and we fully understand that as we do this, why it is our legal folks' opinion that, that this is not the correct decision, but I think that we'll probably pass it anyway, so. Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
No.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you all, and I appreciate everyone's thoughtfulness on this issue. Next item, please.
Item M, a county zoning case to rezone property from rural residential to single-family residential located on the west side of South 151st Street West and approximately one-quarter mile north of West MacArthur Road.
Thank you. Mr. Miller, before you start, I want to make sure that I declare that I have had ex parte contact on this issue, both at Citizens Advisory Board and from the developer of the property, and that I haven't made any decisions on this at this time. I don't know if any other commissioners have had ex parte contact. If they have, we need to declare it at this time. Seeing no one, Mr. Miller, could you present the case?
Dale Miller, Planning Staff. This is approximately 78 acres that are outlined in the black tape there. It's currently zoned RR Rural Residential, and they're requesting SF-20, single-family residential zoning, in order to develop a subdivision. All of the, as you can see here in the aerial, all of the, whatever green color that is, is RR Rural Residential. This little pink chunk down here is the only SF-20 in the immediate area. The, the RR has a minimum lot size of two acres, whereas the SF-20 has a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet. However, the sanitation code, because there's no public sewers in the area, the sanitation code will trigger a one-acre minimum lot size, because they'll probably have to use onsite wastewater disposal systems. There is a rural water district line along MacArthur, and we've been advised that they are in discussions with the rural water district about trying to bring water up to serve the potential subdivision if this is approved. The, the applicant has developed a similar subdivision, two miles to the east, Redmond Estates, on approximately 80 acres. And that particular development netted 53 acres, I mean, 53 lots of 1.02 acres in size. So, it kind of gives you a comparison of what, if it's approved, of what may potentially develop. However, the total amount of lots may be impacted by drainage issues and how they have to detain and address any drainage issues. Currently, it is farm ground. It's row crop ground that is plowed and worked multiple times a year, as is the land around it in virtually all directions. There are, there's a home right here, and these folks also own this ground. There's a home here immediately to the east, and these folks also own this ground. And then, a little further north, there's a home, farmstead up here. Based on the tax records, this is all this particular ownership owns. The rest of this that surrounds it is owned by a different ownership, for whatever that's There is a 23.17% protest that triggers a four-out-of-five vote to override the neighborhood protest. The concerns that the neighbors discussed were, if I can go back to the aerial, maybe you can see, existing on the site to the north and to the south are drainage terraces that, not sure how long they've been there, but they look like they've been there for a while. And one of the concerns was that these terraces currently address the drainage that comes off of these neighboring properties, and that if this is redeveloped with a single-family subdivision, then what will happen to the folks to the north and south? And as you're aware, zoning is one step in development that before a subdivision can get building permits, they would have to come in and plat the property. And as part of the plating, there's a requirement to provide a drainage plan to County Public Works. The County Public Works stormwater engineer would review that drainage plan and ensure that's in compliance with existing regulations. The current policy is that whatever rain, drainage that fall, that runs off of this property today is the amount that would be allowed to come off once it's developed. So, if it's developed, it cannot let more water run off in the developed state than it does today. And we have the stormwater engineer at Planning Commission, and it was his opinion that they will definitely have to provide detention ponds and then slowly release that water over time to comply with that requirement. What we were told at the subdivision, or at the Planning Commission meeting and at the CAB meeting is that today, because this area is very flat, when there's a one-to-two-inch rain, a lot of the water comes down here, there's a little swale that runs here, hits the ditch, goes down to a bridge in the section line road here, and that because the ditch, the, the bridge structure is not big enough, water overtops the road on occasion. And so, that was one of the reasons they were concerned. The other is this is a sand-gravel section line road, and they were concerned about the amount of traffic that could be generated from a subdivision that would be put in here. The policy that applies to that is if this is approved and they move ahead with the development, they will have to pave from MacArthur, because that's the closest paved road, to their first entrance, wherever that turns out to be as part of the plat. And other concerns that were expressed were that folks that move in here are usually town people who aren't used to living in an agricultural area, and that they then take stuff into the fields that the farmer hits with his equipment, and it tears his equipment up. I think one guy gave an example of, he ran over an electric cord, you know, extension cord that was out in the field. Another example is they say that when the foundations are poured, the concrete truck, concrete trucks dump whatever's not used as part of the foundation on each of the lots. That gets left for the property owner, and instead of it being disposed of properly, it either ends up in the ditch, or they dump it into the field, and then the, the farmer hits it with, with his implements. So, those are the kinds of things that, that were brought up as part of the discussion. Planning Commission recommended 12-0 to recommend approval. The CAB recommended nine-to-one for approval. And let's see here, do I have anything else that? That's the section line road that comes off of MacArthur. And with that, I try and answer questions.
Any questions for Mr. Miller?
The agent is here, Mr. Avi, if you have specific questions.
Very good. Mr. Avi, would you like to say anything? Warren Russ?
Good morning, Commissioner. Chairman Dennis. Russ Avi with Baughman Company, agent for the applicant. I don't think I could really go over the details of the project any better than Mr. Miller just did. Will stand for any questions that the commission may have.
Very good. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Is anyone else in the audience today who would like to speak on this issue? Seeing no one, Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do appreciate staff, you did a great job explaining that today, and you and I met earlier, you explained it to me personally, essentially, like you did today. We, we had a number of questions and discussions. With the issue of the concrete, that would be, that would be considered illegal dumping if that was to happen. Can you talk about that?
Yes, that would be an activity that potentially should be addressed at the time that an occupancy permit is, is reviewed, if it's there, but otherwise, it's, it's, would be illegal dumping. And to dump it particularly onto somebody else's property would be illegal and probably end up being a civil matter if there was damage to equipment.
If the road was, if the road was paved to that division, that subdivision, if it was, if it was developed, would that, would that stay as a township road?
Yes.
But township would also receive?
As far as I'm aware, unless Mr. Spears has a different opinion.
In most cases, we, we take them over after they're paved. In most cases, we would take a look at it. Some of the townships are able to take care of paved roads, some are not, don't have the capability, but we would look at it, and I would say more than likely, we would take it over.
Okay. All right, that's good, good information. I, I am a little interested in the water aspect. So, the water, I assume, flows from north to south across the property?
Yeah, I think that's a fair representation. Ultimately, gets, the way they described it, because of this little swale, part of it ends up going back to the east of the road, but it looks like the way the swales are, that that's the general flow.
So, that water issue you talked about, where the water covers the road once in a while, that happens currently? And so, their concern might be that this would be more often or a worse situation is what their, is that what their concern was?
They're thinking with the, the houses and the, and the paving that go with houses, there's more surface. And so, that's why the stormwater engineer indicated they would have to provide detention and then release it at a slow rate as opposed to just letting it run off.
Okay, so you said one thing I think was a little bit curious, and that is, with all the hard surface being put in there, you know, there'd be some driveways and some roofs and things like that, clearly, there'd be a little bit more runoff out of this area than there is currently, because right now, that, that, that hard surface, I mean, the hard surface would shed that water rather than soaking into the ground, so it'd be, there might be a little bit more water after it was developed. But you also mentioned the detention pond, and, or detention pond, retention pond that meters that out slowly. So, even though there's more water, perhaps it would be, it'll be flowing away from the property because of the hard surface, it's more managed. Is that, is that the right way to think about that?
Right. The, the basic design, and Mr. Spears can probably do it better than I am, but the basic design is the, the stormwater detention ponds have to collect the excess water and then release it at the same rate as if there was no development. I'll let Mr. Spears add to it.
Commissioner Howell, yeah, the, the post-development outflow must be less than or equal to the pre-development outflow. So, we cannot calculate it right now, because like what you're talking about, the impervious area, we don't know how many homes, we don't know what may, during a zoning case, we don't have a drainage plan, because there's different things that could possibly go in there. So, after it's platted, and we know what they're going to do, we look at, they submit a drainage plan to us, the impervious area is calculated, and then we have drainage ponds or detention that stores water and lets it out at a controlled rate, no greater than what's coming out now. So, that's, that's the plan.
Okay, I understand that now. Well, thank you for that explanation, and is the applicant aware of that, and you're, you understand, okay. Mr. Chairman, I would, I would be glad to make a motion this morning. We have, I asked for Mr. Wagner to develop the best language. It's called option number five, I don't know if you have a copy of it or not, but I'd be glad to read this. It says, "I would make a motion to approve the zone change and establish a protective overlay. I move that we approve the requested zone change and also establish a protective overlay for this property that would require that any drainage plan approve as a part, approve as a part of the plat for this property would not hinder or prevent the pre-zoning approval flow of the drainage onto this property." I think that, that takes care of that concern, in my opinion. Everything else, I think, has already been mentioned, so I make that motion, sir.
Thank you. I'd like to second the motion. Is there any discussion on the motion? I appreciate the work that the staff has done on this property. As I said, we did hear this at the, at the Citizens Advisory Board, and a number of the property owners surrounding this were in attendance at that meeting. The motion that has been moved and seconded, I believe, solves the problems that came up. The other problem was on the illegal dumping, but I know that I've been working with staff to make sure that when property is finished up and we have the inspections on it, that the inspections make sure that that property is cleaned up before that they issue a certificate of occupancy. One clarification on the road as described by Commissioner Howell, this road is probably only a quarter of a mile or a little longer than that. Would we really take over an entire mile of road if we only have less than half of it paved? Mr. Spears?
That is problematical. So, it's a safety deal is the one thing that bothers us, and, and we don't usually, in this case, it's required just to go to the driveway entrance, we would have to look at that other half a mile and look at.
Okay. So, it's not certain that we would take that entire mile over, and we're not voting on that today?
You're not voting on that today, and we need to look at that, because if you're going to pave half of that, part of that, we probably need to pave the other part of it and take the whole mile over. That's what goes through my head right off the bat. But we, we would look at it. We have had accidents of cars going from paved to gravel and gravel to paved, vice versa. So, in, in those places throughout the county that had that situation, we paved the rest of the mile.
I understand that, but it costs us over a million dollars a mile to pave a mile of road, correct?
Well, that's if you do the full-meal deal. So, there's other possibilities also.
There's other possibilities, all right. But in reality, they can, they can pave to their nearest entrance. They don't have to pave all the way to the end of that.
From a paved road to the nearest entrance, that's right.
And so, that could be as little as a quarter of a mile, and then we would pick up three-quarters a mile in that case. So, please talk to us before we get to that point, okay?
Absolutely.
It has nothing to do with this motion, but we need to discuss it a little further, too.
We'd study it a little further.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That was a very good observation. Thank you for the question. I would like to say that I think our, our experience on, on these miles have been about 100, I think last couple of times we did this is like $150,000 a mile, because it's, we're not doing curb and gutter, storm drainage and things, things like that. We're simply widening the road to the proper width and putting down a base and a, and a top coat. So, it's like 150, if I'm about right, Mr. Spears, it's, it's far from a million. 150, if I'm about right, Mr. Spears. It's far from a million, I believe.
Well, last year, we did seven and a half miles for one and a half million dollars. So I'm going to say that was around 200,000 on those.
Okay. That helps quite a lot. And I agree that we ought to do the whole mile if possible. If that conversation ever came up, I see the concern for safety. I am aware of a few places in the county that that situation does exist. So I would think we ought to have that conversation. But if the township owned the road, maybe we'd get the tax revenue, and they would have to maintain that road. So I think it's still an item of discussion. I don't think we have any responsibility to resolve that today.
We don't have to make a decision, but it's something to think about in the future.
Sure.
Very good. I don't see any other questions. We have a motion and a second on the table. Seeing nothing else, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Item N, a resolution authorizing the making of certain improvements to the Sedgwick County Courthouse complex and providing for the payment of the costs thereof.
Morning, Lindsey.
Good morning, Chairman, and good morning, Commissioners. Lindsey Porusso with your Finance Department. So this item requests your approval for a resolution that would authorize work to be done on the adult detention facility. And it states your intent basically to bond fund that work later this year. That work includes three main pieces. You heard that this is a little bit different than what was included in your initial 2019 CIP when Tanya gave her presentation to you on March 5. We've expanded the scope of this event, and there will be further discussion with Commissioners on that throughout this process. The first piece of work is true to what was in the 2019 CIP, and that is for the remodeling of existing visitation space in the jail, as well as an expansion that would bring that facility out slightly more to the street. The second component actually accelerates a piece that was in your 2021 CIP for replacement of roofs that now we believe is necessary to do sooner. And so that is packaged with this, as well as the replacement of some generators that are greater than 30 years. So what this resolution would do is allow us to make those improvements. Because it is adjacent to the courthouse, it is a part of what by charter is defined as the courthouse complex. That's essentially three blocks around this building. And so as a result, we would be authorized to issue general obligation bonds. And so this resolution spells that out. And that amount would be enough to cover the cost of the work itself. We would issue those bonds later this year, as well as any cost to issue that debt. So we estimate at this point that that would be in the aggregate $6,820,000. Now, as we go through the project and those costs are truer, when we actually come to you to do the bond issuance, those costs will be trued up. And we will only request to issue bonds for what is truly spent on the project. Now, in addition, at that time, we could bind this with any other improvements that we want to bond fund. And so I'll talk to you about that here in a moment. We do have some intention to do that. We estimate if we do do the full, $6.82 million, that the average annual debt service would be about $432,000 per year. This is programmed into the forecast that you've seen at your retreat. So of course, these bonds are subject to the county's debt policy. And so though we are early in the process, I just want to give you some reassurance that we are well within those limits. What that policy does is it gives us five ratios. And for the first four, we must be below at least three before we can issue debt. And those include per capita direct debt. So for example, every citizen that lives in Sedgwick County, we take our total debt for the county, our direct debt, and we divide that out by per member of the population. And so that limit is $500, or I'm sorry, yes, $500 per person. With this, as well as the next item you'll hear about, we think that that rate will be about $200, actually. So we are well below that ratio. For direct debt as a percent of full market value, we have a limit of 1.5%. Again, that is counties, the county's debt only. We estimate with this issuance, that would be about 0.27%. So again, well below that ratio. Then we take a look at the entire debt of all taxing entities in the county. And so again, we take it on a per capita basis. And on that one, the limit is $3,000. And this is the one area where we exceed our ratio. And we estimate that with this debt, that would put us at $3,793. Again, the limit is 3,000. But again, I'll point back to that earlier discussion about that first ratio. It is not the county's direct debt that is causing that to exceed. That is, when you take into account the debt of all of the school districts, all of the townships, all of the cities, that's where we get above that threshold. But again, that is acceptable under our policy. The fourth ratio, again, takes that amount of everyone else's debt, including ours, and puts that as a percentage of the full market value. That limit is 6%. And with this debt, we expect that that would be about 5.41%. And then finally, the fifth ratio is one that we may never exceed. If we exceed it, we can issue debt per year policy. And that is the annual debt service that we pay as a percent of our total adopted budget for the general fund, plus our bond and interest fund. And that limit is 10%. And right now, if we include this estimated debt, that puts us at 8.18%. So we are still well within that ratio. So with that, I do want to say thank you to Joe Norton and Garth Herman, who are here today from Gilmore and Bell, our bond counsel, who did all of the hard work in putting this information together. I just get to present it. I'm sure they would be happy to help address any questions. I also would. If you don't have any questions, then I recommend your approval of the resolution today.
Thank you. Commissioner Meitzner?
Thank you. Appreciate you explaining the one, two, three, four, what, the five categories. And I don't know if it's how important it is or if it's a typo. You said the last one, the annual debt service?
10%.
And in our package, it says 20%.
Oh, then that is definitely an error, and I apologize for that.
It is, okay. I just didn't know.
That was our very, very old policy, two back.
Okay, all right. Very good. I don't have any other questions at this time. Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just back to those five dates to look at, that middle one, you said that we would be $3793 per capita. What is it currently? Do we know the current number? It's over 3,000 right now, is it not?
It is over 3,000. I'll need to do some double checking. I don't have it without this debt issuance.
It's just more of a curiosity. I don't think that's going to change necessarily what I do here today. But these numbers are showing the right, these are after this debt would be taken on.
Right. Yes, sir.
These are after debt numbers. Okay. Curiously, so you mentioned a number a minute ago, you said $6,800 and something. You gave me a number. What was that number again?
So that is the combination of the remodeling, well, the exact number is $6,820,000. That comes from the combined three projects, along with our estimated issuance costs. And so we would issue debt up to $6.82 million. Again, we will true that up, though. That number may change before we come back to you in the fall.
Okay. I don't see that number in the material here. I guess it's, I see other numbers here, but...
It is in that analysis section under the project description.
Okay.
In the agenda item.
Oh, I do see it now. Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Appreciate that very much. Do we normally issue debt for roofs and generators?
We typically would not, but because of the nature of, just because of the virtue of the size of those, it wouldn't typically be economically prudent to do that. But because this work could be done in a way that would minimize disruption for the jail, we package that together. Again, we did not count on that $887,000 in the 2019 CIP. And so we would either need to wait for 2021 when we do have that programmed into the forecast. But by allowing us to bond fund it packaged with this, we achieve some efficiencies, also in the costs of the work that's going to be done on the project. And so we think that that's a prudent thing to do at this point.
Okay. Well, generally speaking, again, to kind of state my personal policy on debt, I think this, at least the remodeling and expansion certainly does fit, something I would be glad to support. And that is, this is unusual, it's fairly expensive, and it's something that would be very difficult to save up for. And I think it's imperative we get this done sooner than later. We've already demonstrated the need for this space. And so I think this fits that, those points pretty well. I'm a little concerned about the debt for the roofs and generators, although I think I will be willing to support it this time. Generally speaking, we have a lot of buildings, I don't know how many buildings we have in Sedgwick County, but I'm sure Tanya knows that. But we have a lot of buildings in Sedgwick County. We're replacing roofs pretty much every year. And in that regard, even though that one roof may last 30 years, we're doing roofs all the time. And I think we ought to have money in our cash budget to handle this rather than using debt, in my opinion. And so generally speaking, I would rather use cash. But nevertheless, I appreciate your good work on this. Thank you so much for the answers. Thank you, Chairman.
Sure.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to thank Tanya and her staff for working on this for so long. This has been going on a couple of years now and bringing it to fruition. And I know the sheriff's excited, the district attorney's excited. I think we're all excited, too, to get this done. And so it's been a long time coming. But Tanya and her staff really did an exceptional job on this. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Did bond counsel need to say anything to us today? Nothing? Very good. Okay. Well, I'll echo Commissioner O'Donnell's comment. We appreciate all the work that's been done to get us to this point. Really, the biggest problem that we've got is space in this facility. And this is going to help open up some of the space so that we can give the DA a little bit more room here. So we'll be moving a lot of the sheriff's operations out of this building over into the new building. The one thing I don't know if I might have missed, the estimated completion date?
I will defer to Tanya on that one.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tanya Cole, Assistant County Manager. We are estimating that it should be done by the end of this year. That's very hopeful. We will know for certain when we receive the bids. They will give us a timeline on the construction. So again, hopeful for the end of this year, but we will know for certain when we get the bids in.
Very good. Well, we appreciate how rapidly this is coming together because I know a lot of people that are needing this space. I imagine when the vote is completed today, we'll hear some cheers coming from the DA's office downstairs. So I appreciate all the work. Thank you. I don't see any other comments. I don't think we have a motion, though, do we?
No.
No motion. Okay.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair, that we adopt the resolution.
Very good. We have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Thank you very much, and thanks for everybody's work on this. Next item, please.
Item O, a resolution declaring it necessary to build or repair existing bridges in the county under the authority of KSA 681103 and providing for the issuance of general obligation bonds to pay the costs thereof.
All right. Hello again, Commissioners.
Forward again, Lindsey.
Didn't get very far. So this item is very similar to what we just discussed. However, this resolution declares an intent to build or repair certain bridges in the county, and then, of course, authorizes the issuance of general obligation bonds to pay those costs plus any issuance costs. Thanks again to Gilmore and Bell for their work in preparing these materials for you. So essentially, this resolution establishes the county's right to fund expenditures for certain projects with available cash, which we typically do. And then we reimburse those accounts with the proceeds of a bond issue. Again, this would be something that we would recommend that we couple with the adult detention facility bond issue later this year. And these programs, of course, have been included in your capital improvement program. You did adopt a 2019 CIP last year that included four bridge projects to be funded with varying degree or levels of bond proceeds. And those bridge projects are outlined in your backup materials, or I'm happy to defer to Mr. Spears if you'd like to talk about those specifically. The bonds authorized here would be sold again later this year. The resolution would permit reimbursement of expenditures up to 18 months prior to the date of that bond sale. So of course, we're well within that threshold, or completion of the projects, whichever is first. We do, again, or we have, again, included this debt service in our financial forecast that you've seen through this year. The preliminary estimate of annual debt service is $256,691 over 20 years. As you heard in the prior item, we are within the provision of the county's debt policy. And Commissioner Howell, Rick was actually able to text me the information that you had requested on current per capita direct overlapping and underlying debt. And as of the end of 2018, that number was $3,750, as compared with $3,793 with this debt included, and also updated to include what we expect other taxing entities to do. So with that, I recommend your approval of the resolution. But of course, I would be happy to stand for any questions, or I'd be happy to volunteer, David, to answer some as well.
Very good. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you again for the great work, Lindsey. And you mentioned a minute, a moment ago, a number, 5-point-something million. Can you give me that number again? The total cost of the...
So we are estimating $4,650,000 total. But the annual debt service, is that what you're referring to? The 2,000, or 256,691?
That's the annual. And that's the 20 years. You add all that up, with the total cost of this...
It would be, oh, the grand total with principal and interest would be $5,133,813.
Okay. So to get $4 million a day, it's going to cost us $5.133 million over 20 years?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'll just state my position. Again, I assume this is going to pass, but I'd like to just, well, before I do that, let me ask, if Mr. Spears can tell us, what's the sufficiency rating on these four bridges? Do we know?
What was the question?
What's the sufficiency rating on these four bridges?
B-473 is 28.5. B-482 is 42.5. B-484 is 18.6. And B-488 is 25.5.
Okay.
Any bridge under 50 needs to be replaced.
And these will be total replacements, is that correct?
Total replacement. Total replacement, yes.
And repairing these really isn't smart. We really do need to replace these bridges. I mean, you guys have looked at options, I assume, whether repair versus replace, that analysis was done?
No. Anything under 50 needs to be replaced. If you have over 50, around 70, you might could just replace a deck, but these have to be totally replaced.
Okay. Just as, I guess, a reminder, two of you weren't here, but last year, I did not vote for the 2019 CIP because of this very issue. A couple of years, when I first became a commissioner, we spent the first couple of years trying not to do this practice. We stopped borrowing the $4 million each year. We actually did fund the projects, though. We put in, I think, $3.4 million the first year and about the same amount the next year, trying to accomplish the work that needed to be done. And I think we have that option, again, this year if we wanted to do that, but to cash fund some things. The point I would make is, if you think, and this is a terrible analogy, but if you were to put some debt on a credit card and take, say, put some cash on a credit card and take the cash and pay off another credit card, that's essentially how I feel about this. I know these are important issues, and I don't want to ignore the importance of these issues need to be fixed. Okay? I agree with that. But the idea of just routinely paying off a $4 million bond and taking on another $4 million bond does add interest cost to the county. And I don't know that it's necessary. So it's a choice we make. There's many governing bodies out there that do not do this type of activity. And it's true, that one bridge will last 50 to 80 years, and that one bridge should be potentially bonded out because it's a very long-lasting piece of infrastructure. But we have 600 of these bridges across the county, and every year we do 10 to 15 bridges a year. So in that regard, it's a bit of a routine type of decision where we just automatically borrow and automatically pay off. And this is costing the county, in this case, over a million dollars in interest. And so I just think the practice is wrong, and I don't like to support, I don't want to support this again today, although I do support the underlying issue to fix these bridges. I don't like the idea of using debt to do so. I would much rather see us find another way. So with that, I'll probably be voting no today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Meitzner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lindsey, tell me, just for my knowledge, so this item and the previous one, do we put those in temporary notes or just as a payable on the books and then book...
So essentially, what we'll do is, this work is completed within typically the scope of a year. And so we will do the, come to you to request the authorization before we start even doing any work on that. You state your intent. The work will be done. We basically use general fund cash to front that to the CIP fund. So we don't need to use any temporary notes. And then we reimburse ourselves in that capital improvement plan fund, essentially, when we do the bond issuance and fund the project specifically to the dollar that has been spent.
Okay. And remind me, and some of these bonds are 15 years and some are 20 years?
Both are, both right now are structured to be 20 years. That's our typical, per policy, that's kind of our... That's our typical, per policy, that's kind of our standard. We have done some exceptions to that, but typically it's 20 years. And just so you know, the policy says that we will pay off 30% of the principal in the first five years of those bonds and 60% in the first 10 years. So it looks a little funky, and that's why we talk about the annual average debt service, because those numbers are slightly higher initially and go down in those outer years.
Okay. So we reduce the principal early?
Right.
Five years and 10 years, and then it's 20 years?
And so then we pay off less interest in those outer years.
And then, so do we, we package everything through the year and then do it at the end of the year?
Right.
Is that...
That's been our past practice. And so in this case, these two items would be the only thing we're contemplating. We need to get your approval to do these, to do the work before you issue bonds. And if Joe or Garth would like to say anymore, they are welcome to.
Okay. And thanks for clarifying.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz?
So how long do these bridges typically last?
Varies. A lot of times, it depends how much salt goes on them. Some of the ones out on the township roads last a lot longer than the ones on our county paved roads where we salt. But I'm going to say they'll last at least 50 years. We actually, right now, on the latest report, if I can find that, we have 23 bridges over 100 years old.
Wow. Okay. Thank you.
And this takes care of four of them? Four of the 23?
No. These four are not those. It's amazing, those are actually in pretty good shape. They're out on township roads, they're smaller bridges, and haven't had salt put on them. So they've lasted a long time. And it shows you, we don't just go by age. It's strictly by sufficiency rating. It's a process that our inspectors go through on each bridge, and it's defined by the federal and state government.
Good answer. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you. Lindsey, what's the interest rate on these bonds?
We have estimated a fairly low rate, right around 3%.
Okay.
2.89.
All right. Thank you. I think that needs to be taken into consideration with some of the arguments that I do agree with Commissioner Howell, that paying for things, cash sometimes does make sense, but these are pretty, in your years doing this, Lindsey, these are historically low, right?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
That it's probably unsustainable over the life of these bonds. In 20 years, we're probably not going to have 3%.
I hope not.
Rates, right, absolutely. So I think it is smart, if we can get money as low as possible now, save up money in case interest rates do rise up in the future and we need to be paying cash or something to avoid that, I would be smart. But 3% does seem pretty, pretty low. So thank you.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I believe that we need to be very conservative, but at the same time, we need to recognize that things that are 50 years, 60, 70 years, we've got bridges that are 100 years old, are items that we do invest in because it's a generational issue. It means that if we save up the cash to pay for it, people that are paying for it may not be around in time to ever drive across one of these bridges. And that is a fairness issue also. I also believe that right now, the construction costs are probably as low as that they're ever going to be. Our interest rates are probably as low as we're going to see in the near future. But I truly do understand Commissioner Howell's philosophical view on this, and I know he voted against the CIP, and he'll likely vote against this today. So I guess I got a question. Do we have the ability to pull out his projects out of the CIP and start setting up a fund to pay for those in the future, when we do have cash to pay for them in his district, and then allow the rest of the Commissioners' districts to have the projects completed?
I think there would, there would be an option to structure our funding however we would want. I would defer to David, though, as to whether having that money saved up over time would be maybe the best way to approach those capital improvement projects.
That's a tough question. When you're looking at a large amount of money, we're replacing two bridges in Commissioner Howell's district right now, as he knows on Pawnee, and those added up to quite a bit of money. I don't have it right off the top of my head, but you would have to figure out, you can use sales tax money for it, for roads or bridges, so you would have to get that in the program. Most of our sales tax...
I'm not talking about sales tax. I'm talking about, in lieu of bonding, do we have an ability to set up a fund so that we can pay cash for those in his district so that we can comply with his philosophical desire to do that?
The cash fund that we have to pay for is the sales tax money that comes in. That's our, that is our cash fund that we use. We pay for many roads with that.
But I'm not talking about sales tax funds, because we're not using sales tax funds for this. We're bonding this.
Correct.
So what I'm talking about is, rather than bond projects in his district, that we then set up a fund so that he can do exactly what his philosophy says.
I got you. But the only fund I know of, of cash, is sales tax. Now, Lindsey, you can help me with that.
Yes.
But that's all I know. The only cash fund you can set up to pay for the projects is with the sales tax cash fund.
So we can't set up a fund?
We could. It would look a little different than, we probably wouldn't fund it out of that sales tax or in bridge fund. We would probably use our cash-funded capital improvement side, which is something that David would not be familiar with. But, but as we have done in the past, to Commissioner Howell's point, when we did do transfers from the general fund to fund those projects, we could do something similar from the general fund to a capital improvement fund for any number of projects.
But we could take money out of the general fund and set it up in a special fund so that at a certain point, when we get to the point that we could pay for those, we could go ahead and do that project, couldn't we?
Technically, yes.
Very good. Okay. Commissioner Howell?
Two comments. Number one, in terms of generational use, we receive these pieces of infrastructure from people who've gone before us and have paid for them. Many of us enjoy those pieces of infrastructure for many years, decades even, without paying for the construction of those because someone before us did that. So to the extent we would save up money and replace things when they're, when they're needed to be replaced, is still a generational philosophical position. I agree that, that, you know, one generation shouldn't, should not pay for all of the infrastructure, but we're not. Even if you had a cash, a cash program versus a bonded program, in either way you want to do that, it's still a generational philosophical ideology. So I would, I would argue that this is not, using, using cash is putting all of the burden on one generation. That's not, that's not true. Second of all, if you were to compare these two programs, a bonded program versus a cash-funded program, to the extent that things are not emergency, if there's an emergent issue out there, we must take care of that. Again, as I mentioned earlier on the space, space needs for, for the jail, that's an extraordinary situation. It's fairly expensive, it's unusual, and it's necessary right now. Okay? So that, to me, is a reasonable way to go forward. If it's an emergent issue, I think that's an appropriate use of debt. If it's not an emergent issue, then we have options. And if you compare a cash-funded program to a bonded program, over the years, a cash-funded program will outperform it every time, because as we save up cash, it earns interest. I don't know what interest we might earn on any money we have in any, any, any accounts, but I'm sure it's at least 3%.
It varies, but yes.
Let's just say it's 3% versus paying 3%. The delta is 6%. And at the end of the day, which one of those two programs will perform the best and provide the most infrastructure, to provide the best things for the citizens of Cedric County, the cash-funded program will outperform it. To the extent that would be singled out as a Commissioner for my part of, for my part of the county, my district, and be dealt with differently than the rest of the county, in my opinion, is an offensive comment. And I would, I would argue that we should not have a policy that treats part of the county differently than the rest of the county. My argument really is about a philosophy that the county should be using cash versus bonds for infrastructure that's not emergent. If it's an emergent issue, we should have that discussion. But to the extent we have the cash, and we've moved away from using bonds already, I noticed in the previous item, our debt right now is down, down just a little rate percent. When I first got here, it was about 12%. We've done a good job of moving away from using debt, and we've done road projects. We have, we focused on the projects that we could afford and those that were the most important, but we have used less debt to do that. And so to the extent these are emergent issues, I would support that. If they're not emergent, then I think we have options. And I don't think we need to single out a part of the county. I think this is a point where, I just think the county as a whole needs to move away from the habitual use of debt that's not based on the fact that it's an emergent issue. We have options. I think we ought to, ought to consider that, because this does cost the county a million dollars in interest. Whereas if, if we did just the opposite, put the same money back for the bond service, for the bond service payments you're going to make, put the same money back into an interest-bearing account, you could do the same work down the road, but would actually do it, you'd actually be able to do quite a bit more work by not wasting a million dollars on interest and actually earning interest instead. So a cash-funded program will outperform a bonded program in every, in every, in every case. So I think I've said too much already, but thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Well, I'm sorry if I offended you, but I am concerned every time when someone says that I've got a philosophical position against this issue, and they then vote against it, but they enjoy the fact that the rest of us support the entire county. So I will continue to support the entire county. I just want to point out the fact that we have people that say, hey, I don't want to do this, but I'm going to enjoy the benefits of it because the other four Commissioners are going to take the heat for it. So do we have a motion on this? No motion. I move that we pass a resolution declaring it is necessary to build or repair existing bridges in the county under the authority of KSA 68-1103 and provide for the issuance of general obligation bonds to pay the costs thereof.
Second?
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
No.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Motion passed. This next item, please.
Item P, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, regular meeting on March 28, 2019.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
How are you doing, Joe?
Doing well, thank you. Hopefully, you all are doing the same. The meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts of March 28, we considered five items that we're bringing before you this morning. Our first item is the stone for aggregate ditch lining for public works. This recommendation is to accept the low bid meeting specifications from H. Escavating LLC, and that's for an initial purchase of $52,300. And then we'd like to establish contract pricing for two years with three one-year options to renew. Item number two, tandem axle dump trucks, and these are equipped with the salt sand spreaders, the liquid anti-icing and de-icing systems. This recommendation is to accept the proposal from Truck Center Companies, that's Freightliner and Fleet Pride, and this is in the amount of $561,825. And we're establishing contract pricing for the non-warranty items for three years at the rates listed. Item number three, 2019 Dodge Charger Police Package All-Wheel Drive Vehicles for Fleet Management and Sheriff's Office. This recommendation is to accept the low bid from Davis Moore Automotive, and this is in the amount of $170,062. The fourth item is the 2019 Chevrolet Express 3500. These are 15 passenger vans for Fleet Management and the Sheriff's Office. This recommendation is to accept the low bid from Don Hatton Chevrolet Incorporated, and it is in the amount of $87,000. And we're establishing contract pricing for labor and parts at the rates listed for a period of three years. And our final item, our brush trucks for Cedric County Fire District Number One, and this recommendation is to accept the low bid from Rusty Eck Ford, and that's in the amount of $95,545.50. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval of these items.
Thanks, Joe. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On items two and five, I have a couple of questions. On these dump trucks, I assume we're going to sell them at Purple Wave. Can you, can you guesstimate how much we might get for those? We have any history on what we've gotten in the past on these types of trucks?
Can I let Ms. Penny Pollan answer that, if you can?
Morning, Penny.
Good morning. Penny Pollan, Fleet Management. Thank you. Historically, we've received between $35,000 and $60,000 for dump trucks. These have a little bit more mileage than historically, so I would probably guess between $25,000 and $40,000.
Okay. And then on the item number, item number five, can you talk about what we would expect to get on those, probably guesstimate on the two brush trucks?
I believe it was discussed around $8,000 a truck.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I don't have any problem with any of the items being recommended today except for, I would like to revive a discussion we've had previously, and I don't think we ended up going anywhere with it. We have a new manager, Tom Stoltz, so we're going to bring everyone back up to speed on the discussion we had, and that is, I think we ought to consider keeping these brush trucks rather than selling them on Purple Wave. And the reason I would want to do that is, number one, when we have brush fires in the middle of summer, when things get hot and windy, number one, I think they'll be very useful. But second of all, I think it helps us get some more data as to how long these things will actually last. We have space, especially Andale. We're building a four-bay station, for example. It's a great location for an extra brush truck, and right now, those bays will have nothing in them, as far as I know. But for $8,000, these trucks, brand new, are going to cost around, by the way, it takes about $20,000 to put the pump unit on there and have it outfitted as a, as a brush truck. So the real cost of these is around, is around $67,000 roughly each, just rounding it off to $70,000. So for a $70,000 truck, we're going to sell one, the older one, for about $8,000 bucks. And I know these old trucks are older. I'm not suggesting we shouldn't buy new trucks. I agree with the intent of the bid board today. But I do think that for $8,000, I'd rather hold that truck and have some use out of it and continue to gain some data as to how long these things actually last in terms of what's going to break next, the engine or transmission, or the pump system, or whatever it would be, to the extent it has some value to Cedric County, I would rather see us keep that. And so I would call this a pilot program. Same thing on the dump trucks. And if you have two brush trucks sitting there and you have a brush fire, take the old truck, put some more miles on it, get some more use out of it. To the extent that we're adding some more wear and tear to that older vehicle, we're saving the wear and tear on the newer vehicle. So again, that helps the fire district, and then, just like the dump trucks, I think we should do the same thing with them. If you have, have to take a load and you've got two trucks sitting there, take the older truck, put some more wear and tear on it. The worst thing that's going to happen is, we'll have a breakdown, but it's not that bad. They do most of their service here in Cedric County. We've got other vehicles that are ready to go should there be a breakdown. I think the data is, the data is valuable, and I would like to see us have a pilot program to get more data as to how long these will last. Because I know when we sell these dump trucks, for example, townships love them because they say, we sell our trucks very, in their opinion, early. To them, it's a brand-new truck. And they're getting a $200,000 dump truck for $35,000, and they love it. And these things, although they have 200,000 miles by the odometer, okay, and by the engine hours, I calculate around 200,000 miles, these things can go a lot further. And so, for the money, I would rather see us keep these and get some more data and actually launch an official pilot program to get more data as to how long these things will actually last. So I'd be glad to support the bid board recommendations, but I would like to see us not sell the items on Purple Wave.
Thank you. Any other comments? To address some of Commissioner Howell's comments, I don't have a problem. I don't know what it takes to change our table of allowances on how many vehicles you can have. That's something that can be worked by staff. And we might try some of these big dump trucks and see if you want to keep some of them around for a while. I don't have a problem. I need staff recommendation on what the wise decision is. I know the last time I was out at Andale, I climbed up in their brush truck that they had out there, and it's a piece of crap. Okay. That's a technical term.
Point blank period.
So, us buying something to replace that, and because the truck is worn out, the one I got up in out there, the pumps are worn out, and if we talk about the worst thing that could happen is a breakdown, I think that's pretty critical when we're going out to fight a fire, is to have a breakdown if we don't have something close that can replace it right away. And if the firemen are out there already with this, how are they going to get back to get whatever they needed to get something else out there? So, I don't know that running a test on the fire engines, fire brush trucks, is the best approach for us. Possibly the ones on the dump truck might be, because I can see that, because I don't have an emergency when I've got a dump truck out there. Usually, we can probably take care of something there. But I don't want to put the public in jeopardy by saying that we're going to have a test and having a breakdown on a critical piece of fire equipment. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I am impressed, and congratulations to the Fire Department. Penny told me that these trucks, one of them's from 1992, one of them's from 1995, so we're talking vehicles that we've maintained for 25 and 27 years, which is great, and they'll be maintained until you get these new trucks in. But also, I think it's important to let everyone know that these are local dealerships that we're buying these trucks from. And I know that's been a source of contention and discussion up here on the bench and throughout management, but I'm very happy to see that we're supporting local businesses.
You as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you for your presentation. I just want to point out, yesterday, when you were in my office, Penny, you mentioned the system that we use to calculate how often we replace vehicles and whatnot. And the biggest factor, I thought, just to make note of Chairman's point, is we want these things to run when they need to run. And so, I think it's case-by-case basis. I mean, if that's what we're doing, we're going to spend additional staff time figuring out which trucks are good, which trucks are not. So I think that, when was this system developed as to how we rotate and sell our vehicles out?
The 15-point system was implemented in 2017. Historically, prior to that, we used just an age and a miles.
Okay. And so you think the system is working pretty well?
I do.
Okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you. I'm not suggesting that we would change the asset tables. I think we ought to, you know, keep these and earmark them as to be sold. So that would be how I would want to handle that. I don't want to change the tables and say, right now we have five brush trucks. I don't want to say we have a need for seven. But an old brush truck may be useful when we have these fires. We have five brush trucks. I'd like to ask Chief Williams, is there a time when we have all five trucks out doing a fire response? And would an extra truck or two be a useful thing to the fire district?
Good morning, Commissioner, interim chief Doug Williams. Yes, there's times in the busy season, in the past couple of years, there has been times when we've deployed all of our apparatus at one time, including the brush trucks and the squads.
Okay. And if you had more trucks, you'd have a way to use them, you think?
If we had more trucks, they would get used, yes.
Okay. Thank you. And then, I certainly like the point system. I think it's done a good job. But I'd like to point out that the 1992 only has 39,000 miles, and the 1994 only has 37,000 miles.
I believe that that was a mistake in that printout on the bottom of that page. Penny had the exact miles, and they're both around 100.
Okay. I'd like to have the correct mileage. And then, secondly, I would say that our fleet management, our fleet maintenance people do a tremendous job. That everything you can imagine that needs to be done to these vehicles is getting done per schedule, and they take care of everything. They don't let things languish. They don't accept deferred maintenance. And so in terms of an older vehicle being dependable, they are. I have driven many older vehicles in my life. In fact, I've only had one new vehicle my entire life. And most of my cars have well over 100,000 miles, and I take good care of them, though. So just because it is an older vehicle, as long as it's well-maintained, doesn't mean it's not dependable. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Yeah, the mileage on one truck is 83,794, and the mileage on the other is 95,920.
Okay. Well, thank you for the updated numbers. Again, just to make my point, I think that the data we would collect is valuable. The $16,000 we would get to sell these, in my opinion, even if we were to hold these things for another year or two and still sell them, you'd still get something for them on Purple Wave when you sold them a year down, a year or two down the road. And then, in the short term, it would reduce the wear and tear on the new vehicle, and you have to compare a new vehicle, $67,000 versus an old vehicle we would sell for $68,000. I just think the data is certainly worth it, and while we've got them, they may be useful to help us fight fires in Cedric County. So, to make my point, I don't want to sell things prematurely. One of our goals is to be efficient, and that means to wear things out, replace them when necessary. And these trucks have low miles. The number-one reason that the points are over 15 is because of their age, not because of their condition. Thank you again, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other comments? And I'm not against old vehicles. I drive a '62 and a '63, so.
Chairman, just a couple of things. First of all, thank you all for acknowledging how good a job Penny does. Her goal every year is to keep 95% of our fleet up at all times, and she is clipping along between 98% and 99% today. And this goes for across the board, fire trucks, cruisers, dump trucks, the entire fleet. Secondly, the fleet fund, there's a balance there, and so for the discussion today of whether we keep and do an experiment with an extra dump truck or an extra brush truck, I'd like a chance to consult with Lindsay, and Penny, and the fire chief, and David, to determine, A, where we put these vehicles and what impact it would have on our fleet fund in the future, and report that back to you after some analysis. If that'd be okay.
Sounds good. Commissioner Howell?
Just to be clear, I'm supporting the recommendations of Board of Bids and Contracts, so I'll make that motion. My only comment is related to whether we should sell these and gather data, or keep them and gather data. And that's really, it's a rabbit trail discussion, but it needs to be done at some point. And with that, I make a motion to approve the recommendations of Board of Bids and Contracts.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second, and I agree with the motion maker, and we do need staff to take a look at it. Very good. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Is that it, please?
Consent agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Stoltz, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items Q through AE today.
Commissioner Howell, do you have something on consent?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion we would approve all those items with the exception of item Q or Quebec.
We have a motion to approve everything except for item Q. Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Is that it, please?
Consent agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Stoltz, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items Q through AE today.
Commissioner Howell, do you have something on consent?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion we would approve all those items with the exception of item Q or Quebec.
We have a motion to approve everything except for item Q. Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Is that it, please?
Consent agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Stoltz, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items Q through AE today.
Commissioner Howell, do you have something on consent?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion we would approve all those items with the exception of item Q or Quebec.
We have a motion to approve everything except for item Q. Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Is that it, please?
Consent agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Stoltz, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items Q through AE today.
Commissioner Howell, do you have something on consent?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion we would approve all those items with the exception of item Q or Quebec.
We have a motion to approve everything except for item Q. Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Is that it, please?
Consent agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Stoltz, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items Q through AE today. Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Is that it, please?
Consent agenda. Good morning, Commissioners.
Tom Stoltz, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items Q through AE today. Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Is that it, please?
Consent agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Stoltz, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items Q through AE today. Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Is that it, please?
Consent agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Stoltz, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items Q through AE today. Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Is that it, please?
Consent agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Stoltz, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items Q through AE today. Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Is that it, please?
Consent agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Stoltz, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items Q through AE today. Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Is that it, please?
Consent agenda. Good morning, Commissioners.
Tom Stoltz, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items Q through AE today. Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Is that it, please?
Consent agenda. Good morning, Commissioners.
Tom Stoltz, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items Q through AE today. Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Is that it, please?
Consent agenda. Good morning, Commissioners.
Tom Stoltz, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items Q through AE today. Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Is that it, please?
Consent agenda. Good morning, Commissioners.
Tom Stoltz, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items Q through AE today. Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Is that it, please?
Consent agenda. Good morning, Commissioners.
Tom Stoltz, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items Q through AE today. Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you.
Is that it, please?
Consent agenda. Good morning, Commissioners.
Tom Stoltz, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items Q through AE today. Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
So, it's not, I'm not trying to be negative towards them personally. I would say, though, this is our job. According to KSA 80-304, our job is to inspect these reports. And to the extent I'm seeing at least this report and possibly the Minnehaw report, it leaves me a question. I don't know that we should include these in our approval of all of the other township reports. I have some questions. And so, I don't mind giving this a little time for them to correct these reports, for us to reconsider these at a later date. Would that be allowed under the law? Do we have a timeframe when we have to allow, we have to approve these, so we can take some time?
You can definitely take some time.
Okay.
They're required to submit to you, or to our office for review, and then your potential approval by January 31st. So, some of them didn't meet that compliance as well. However, I guess I would ask for your direction on Minnehaw. They have disclosed that they have unpaid invoices.
Okay.
But what further information you'd like for me to gather? If you'd like to see copies of those invoices that were unpaid, and the reason on why they left them unpaid? I hazard a guess because they didn't have the cash to pay them. But I would have to have that information from them to clarify.
I guess the report that we have in front of us, as far as I know, is accurate. And that's what we're proving today is the accuracy. My only question would be whether they're allowed to have debt. And there's a question there about their positive balance, I think, is what that is trying to say there on that question. It's a little confusing to me, but.
Right.
I think they've answered the question incorrectly. And so, I'd just like to have that reviewed by someone, that that would be, and I don't mind even doing this next meeting, or two meetings from now.
Okay.
There's no timeline. But I guess I'd like to have someone, you know, verify whether or not that answer to that question is correct, if it should be, should be a no, or is it accurate to say it's a yes? I don't understand what the question even means exactly, but to me, that's a concern. And I would like to give them an opportunity to, or someone, the clerk's office, to work with them, review that, to just ensure that one little tidbit is correct. And then, on Rockford Township, I would like it if you would work with them, if you would be willing to, to come up with an updated report that is more accurate. Because I think what I'm seeing right now, as far as I can tell, probably does have some errors in it.
Mm-hmm.
And I think we need to have an accurate report for us to adopt that. So, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion we would approve all of the annual expense reports of Sedgwick County townships, with the exception of Minnehaw and Rockford Township.
Thank you. Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call her role.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Next item, please.
Legislative issues.
Mr. Boone, we got anything today?
Very briefly, Mr. Chairman. We got some exciting news yesterday, that our bill, Senate Bill 129, election bill, which would allow citizens in Sedgwick County to vote at any polling place, passed out a conference committee. It passed 124 to nothing in the House when it went through the House, so we just need to get the House and Senate to approve this, and it'll be a great service to citizens of our county. We're also monitoring House Bill 2084, which is in conference committee as well, deals with 911 fees and an increase there that we're watching very carefully. The legislature, the session of legislature is about to wrap up, and they're mostly just dealing with conference committees now and conference committee reports on the floor. And then, they'll be taking a break, so not much going on other than that right now.
Any word on behavioral health?
No, sir. We haven't heard any update on that. I'm sure that once our lobbyist has more time, once the session is over, that we'll be able to make some movement there.
Very good. Any questions from the Board on legislative issues? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, next item.
Other.
Other. Do any commissioners have anything dealing with other today? Just two things briefly. First of all, I want to welcome Dionne back. This is his first meeting since his health scare, and we're very happy to have you back. So, and we didn't talk about any daylight savings time today, so I don't know that we got anything that'll be in the paper tomorrow. But welcome back. We really do. We, you were in our thoughts and prayers. I'll let Commissioner Cruz talk next.
Thank you. I just forgot, I do want to welcome you as well, so it's nice to see you back there. Hopefully, we have, we have a lot of positive things happening in the county, so we'll be looking forward to some positive stories, possibly. One positive story is this coming Monday at Connie's Mexico Cafe. I'm having my first advisory board, and I see Philip here, who is hopefully going to serve on that. And I'm just looking forward to creating some inspiring stories that we can spread throughout our county, because there is a lot happening. I just wanted to mention that Deborah Shar with KMUW is going to be featuring one of our employees tomorrow. So, take a listen to KMUW in the morning and afternoon. That's it.
Very good. I have one more item. There's one service that Sedgwick County provides, our Register of Deeds. Tanya Buckingham has put out some little flyers, and I've been passing those out any time I'm around any veterans whatsoever. Because the most important document that any veteran has is a DD 214 when they retire, because that tells them and their next kin that they do have benefits coming from the Veterans Administration. And if you have a disaster where you have a tornado, your house burns down, something happens, and you've lost your DD 214, don't worry. If you've taken it up here to the Sedgwick County Courthouse and taken it to the Register of Deeds, they will file that for you. And it is a private document, just because of the fact that it goes into the Register of Deeds. Lonnie can't come in off the street and say he'd like to have a copy of my DD 214, because they won't give it to him. It does have, at least mine, I don't know if the new ones do, it has my social security number on it, so I don't want to divulge to anyone else. But if a veteran passes away and their next of kin needs a copy of that DD 214 to get any kind of veterans' benefits as a result of that, it is on file. Also, when you take it down and give it to Tanya Buckingham and her folks, they will give you back five certified copies of that document that you can take home and put different places to keep available, so that if you ever need one again. So, I want to commend our Register of Deeds to having a service like this for men and women that have served our country. So, I just wanted to pass that on, and I do carry these around when I go to different locations that have veterans and pass it out and let them know. But we have an audience right now, so I wanted to get it out to those folks.
And it's free.
And it's free. Thank you, Lonnie. It is free. We won't charge anything, and if you want to come up and get one, I don't think they'll charge you for it at that time either. So, great job for our Register of Deeds. Thank you. We are not going to have an executive session as part of the Board of County Commissioners, so we're going to skip that item. Is that okay, Madam Clerk? Very good. So, we don't have anything else for the Sedgwick County Board of County Commissioners, so I'm going to adjourn the Board of County Commissioners meeting for April 3rd. And I want to call to order the governing body of Fire District Number One for April 3rd, 2019. Madam Clerk, next item.
Rule call. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Chairman Dennis.
Present.
Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on the public agenda for our governing body of Fire District Number One? Seeing no one, next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, fire meeting minutes of February 6, 2019.
Thank you. All members were present on February 6, 2019. Everyone's had a chance to review those, move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call her role.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Next item, please.
Executive session.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Yep. I'd like to move, it is our understanding that the Board of County Commissioners, sitting as the governing body of Fire District Number One, wishes to have an executive session during the regular meeting of the Board, which is today. Besides our commissioners, the only additional attendees needed for the executive session is Ms. Sheena Schmutz, Sedgwick County Human Resources Manager, neither the county manager